Create a multi-use trail from Fitchburg to Lemonster. The state has committed more than $12 million in funds to design and construct the TCRT, and a federal earmark of $2 million has been set aside towards the $3 million purchase price of the trail. The balance of the purchase price is expected to be borne by the two cities. Second is Parks and Playground Improvement Project, $110,000. Summary, project funds will be used to match $244,203 in parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, programs, funds, park, to make improvements to the First and Railroad Street Park. Activities include the installation of a basketball court and the provision of green space for passive recreation and education. The mitigation of stormwater runoff is an added benefit to this project. These funds will be used to supplement the prior year CDBG funds to continue work on the other parks listed on the city's priority action plan for parks and playgrounds. Any questions, concerns?
I got a question.
Mr. Cassas, if you could please come forward and speak to these. Thank you. Councilor Boishman, the floor is yours.
I know we talked earlier today, but I forgot all about this question. If I sit here and I say yes on this $100,000, and we start this project, this Twin Cities Rail project, and five years after the trail rails pop and running, who's going to maintain the trail? In other words, pick up the trash, if trees fall down in the pathway, who picks it up?
Well, there is an association of residents of both cities that have been meeting for a couple of years now. They've already raised some funds that are being held by the community foundation on their behalf for the purpose of encouraging the trail use, and they've committed to developing a fund that would be used so that citizens could adopt the trail and would be responsible for its maintenance. In addition to that, a friend of the trail, someone who I know personally, who is the trustee of a foundation that has funds set aside for recreational use, and he's a former resident of Lemonster, has committed the balance of the funds in that foundation toward the rail trail and asked how he could best support the trail's growth and development. And what I told him was, provide us with those funds to use as an endowment for maintenance, because that's going to be the most difficult part of managing this project. And so, we have a commitment there of about $70,000 that would help start that process. I know that several of the businesses along Water Street, the entire corridor of Fitchburg and Lemonster, have expressed a lot of enthusiasm about this trail and are willing and able to help both with maintenance and to make donations to the trail. So, I think that that group will oversee that process and that they will have an adequate fund to begin with, so that the two cities won't be principally responsible for maintaining it.
And so, we're going to start right next to Market Basket on Water Street. That's when the trail is going to start, and it's going to go all the way to Lemonster, right?
That's currently the plan. There is a section at the beginning by Water, by the Water Street Bridge that the ownership is in question. The CSX Corporation, the rail corporation, owns and has abandoned the rail line, but it's not clear that they have title to that first little section that runs from the Water Street Bridge up to Third Street. And we have a title researcher now looking at that, but one way or the other, we will be able to acquire it, we expect.
And a question here. I know I asked you this question, and I'm puzzled. We don't have an estimate. I know what we're trying to do, we're trying to bring people in from different parts of the state to come to Fitchburg and live, or Lemonster, the same thing, so there can be more appetizing for, to get people out and do walking and exercising. We don't have any clue how many people are going to, an idea of what we project, how many people will use the trail. I hate to spend a million dollars or half a million dollars and have five people use it, and then nobody else uses it. That's my problem. You know what I mean?
All I can tell you, councilors, no, there is no study that I can show you that's going to guarantee that there's going to be a certain number of users on the trail. But I would ask you to look at some of the other trails in the area on a Saturday afternoon and look at the number of people that you see there. The most recent, the most local one is the Air Pepperell Rail Trail, and that has hundreds of people who use it every weekend and during the day as well, during the week whenever they can. It's the kind of amenity that makes a community attractive to people who have a choice about where they choose to live. And I think we want to make that attraction there, and when you attract people like that, those people also want to spend money in the community that they're living. So, it's part of a process that helps grow the economy of a local community.
Okay. Councilor Beal.
Thank you. First of all, we used to actually ride our bikes along railroad tracks down there, and so we were probably the first people to use the rail trail. Larry, I know that you're saying this is coming out by Market Basket, and you go to other cities and other communities, and they actually have bicycles that you can slide your credit card through, pull the bike out, rent it for the day, and then come back. Has the city ever thought of doing anything like that? I know, especially with the college being so close, it might not be a bad idea for the college kids if they want to come down, rent a bike for the day, ride the rail trail, and then bring the bike back. Has anyone ever thought of putting those up in the area?
That has been considered, and I know we met with a company a couple of years ago, a couple of department heads, and I think Council Caddy was president at that. That particular company didn't follow up on the idea, but I think that's an idea whose time, if it hasn't come already, is coming as more and more people start using bicycles to get around.
Thank you.
Councilor Joseph.
I guess my question, we had a meeting last night, we saw the presentation by the community, what they requested, what their needs were, and what their top five needs were. How does either one of these fit into the top five needs that were requested by the community towards CDBG money?
How does the proposed rail trail?
The rail trail, yeah. Or either the rail trail or the parks and playground improvement.
Well, I mean, we know what they do in terms of providing a benefit to the community. We don't design a program to fit a popularity poll that's very limited in its nature and that often doesn't provide explanations about the specifics of what's being proposed. So, we really didn't have residents voting on, well, would you like a park in your neighborhood, and if it looked like this, would you be supportive of it? It was just a general question. And in most of the categories that were listed, residents were, had a favorable response to virtually all of the things that were listed before them. But no, it wasn't one of the top five in that case. But we have recommended funding for a lot of the activities within the CDBG program guidelines that do address items that are in that top five.
Okay. And out of the two, the parks and playgrounds and the rail trail, how much of city employees are going to be doing the work for either one of those programs versus contract employees?
We don't envision any city employees involved with the rail trail project or with the First and Railroad Street Park project. There might be some minimum clearing work that the DPW might do on First and Railroad, but we're not anticipating, we're not budgeting for any DPW labor for that right now. We do, the budget does also provide, in combination with funds that are still available from prior years, for us also to do complete environmental work at Coolidge Park related to the improvements that were done there a few years ago, to put in the splash pad at Park Hill, to install bike racks at two or three different parks, and to grade and seed the Coolidge Park soccer fields. Now, that work, the soccer field work, will be done by the DPW. That was the most cost-effective way we could improve the conditions of that playing field. So, that's the method that we decided was the best use of the funding.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Green.
Well, I can talk about firsthand experience with rail trails, because both Brian and I are huge fans of the Air to Nashville rail trail. Every Saturday and or Sunday, we're there, and we've noticed that the community, the backs of the community that abuts that property, there's neighbors out there when we drive by who are offering us coffee, who will wave, you know, take on conversation. But what we've noticed in a positive light is that at the end, at the air end of that rail trail, there's a little, I would have to say like a little shed that's been set up that will now serve, you know, coffee, hot cocoa if it's cold, you know, ice, you know, iced water and stuff. So, I believe that our rail trail could support a couple of little businesses, you know, even right in Market Basket parking lot or something close to that, that could help, I mean, maybe eventually help fund taking care of the rail trail. I mean, I think that we've made huge improvements over the last, how long have you been working on rail trail? 15 years, 12 or 15 years? And finally, I think we're making headway. Who's the big group that's, is that MSR PC that's heading that up?
MRPC. Well, it really isn't being headed up by MRPC, but what they are doing is they're acting as a coordinating branch for the two cities to get together and work, and it's perfect because they're right on the city line. So, they do play a role, and they also play a role in the funding itself that's being committed by the Mass Department of Transportation, because that goes through the transportation improvement program.
Right, and that's a huge amount that they're, that the DOT is putting in for this.
It is a very large amount, over $11 million from them alone, and another $2.4 million is committed for design work from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. They have been really the prime mover over the last few months in terms of getting the design team together. They've already surveyed the trail, they've done wetlands delineation, they've now helped pick up some of the burden that I've been assuming as the representative of the two cities over the last several years in terms of working with the railroad company and getting the legal work done that needs to get done. So, it's really starting to move forward now.
Good. Do we have an estimated, like, will this be this season, next season? When will we be able to get our bikes on that trail? Just a rough estimate.
The, we'll be able to acquire it this year, we believe.
Okay.
Unless there's a major issue that comes up, we should be able to acquire it this year. But the work won't begin, the funding on the tip isn't available until FY '19, which means July 1st of 2018 would be when funding would be available. So, we're hoping that the design will all be done before then, so that by the summer of 2018, they'll be ready to bid and award a project and get the actual construction of the trail started.
Okay. Great. And my other question is, in year '41, because I like to keep all this information, I did see that the project, the public bike racks project, was awarded $4,500 for bike racks at Coolidge, Park Hill, Riverfront, Sheldon, and Cogswell. Can you give me an update if those racks have been put in? And if yes, great, are we able to maintain them? And if not, is there a reason why?
They have not been installed yet. The DPW will be installing them, and we will be purchasing them. We've got a number of different options for the style of bike rack that we can install, and we intend to present them to the Bike Pedestrian Committee at its next meeting, so that we can have them make a choice about, you know, which, what type of racks they would like to see us install. And we want the DPW to install them, because we want to have a permanent poured foundation for them, so that they don't go anywhere, that they stay at the parks that they're placed.
All right. And are you still looking at about $25,000 for the Coolidge Park soccer field?
That is still what we're anticipating, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Caddy.
I think Amy's question, I think Larry was being modest. Larry's been the driving force behind this trail for several years, and he should be the one that takes the credit for it. Larry, I hope I live long enough to see this trail come to fruition. And I just want to, Amy, I know you just said that you use the rail trails. Paul, I guess you don't, but if you have, if you have children, there isn't a safe place in this city to ride a bike unless you go to a park. There certainly isn't a trail that's going to be as long as this one. When you get to major intersections, there's road crossings that make it safe to cross the roads. But think of if you were a biker and you were able to take your children or your grandchildren from Fitchburg to Lemonster, stop and have something to eat at the Longhorn Shop, and get something in the market, and then come back to where you started. That's, I travel all over New England to go to these trails, and we spend the entire day doing it. It's healthy, it doesn't cost anything, and I'm jealous every time I go somewhere to ride a bike. I'm jealous, because we don't have it here. We need, we need to have this here. Even on a summer's day, late in the afternoon at 5:00, it's still light out for another three or four hours. Be great to grab your bike, run to the trail, and get, you know, 15 miles in, up and back. So, this is something that I think is, it's a quality of life issue for our citizens. It's a real big deal to have this. Thank you.
Larry, I just want to take a quick moment and thank you for all of your efforts in driving both of these projects, and certainly thanking the partners who have played a key role. I know certainly for the Twin Cities Rail Trail, I know that our sister city of Lemonster has done some work as well on this, so I'd like to thank all those involved. And I know MOC was involved on the Parks and Playground Improvement Project, and certainly they continue to do great work in our community, and we shouldn't overlook those nonprofit organizations who spend a great deal of time assisting the city to improve our quality of life, so certainly my appreciation. I think Council Boishman's point was a good one in that talking about sustainability and making sure that we're not overtaxing our DPW parks team in being able to maintain these. So, it's very, it's always a concern when we add things of, can we maintain the quality that we realize throughout the city, and can we maintain that in a new park? And very pleased to hear that not only do we have kind of a cadre of volunteers who are eager and willing to help maintain, but realistically, we know that's, you know, they'll always do work, but there's always need for additional maintenance. Thrilled to hear that there's someone who's been so generous enough to pledge some sort of endowment, and if a $70,000 gift or in that neighborhood does come to fruition to create an endowment, I certainly hope that we as a city have an opportunity to thank that individual or those individuals at the proper time, because it's a substantial endowment, and certainly I hope we can continue to grow that. You know, $70,000 endowment is probably turning about $3,500 a year in perpetuity to help maintain, so that's exciting to hear, and certainly glad to see that the community is excited enough to continue giving back. So, Larry, thanks for your efforts.
You're welcome. If I can mention one additional thing with respect to long-term maintenance, one of the things we hope to take advantage of is the experience of some of the other rail trails that have been built, including the one in Air. If you try riding your bike on that right now, you notice a lot of areas where there's been root upcroppings and areas where there've been sinkholes, and it's difficult to maintain that kind of a problem that occurs within a few years of a lot of these trails. But the technology of building trails has improved with time, and we are emphasizing both cities that we want the design of this trail to include root barriers that can now be installed around the edges of both, and that the base course of material and the top course is built in such a way that we don't have those kinds of problems for a long, long time.
Great. Thank you. Councilor Caddy.
Do you want to approve these individually, or you want to wait till the end?
If we could approve each pool of money, so if I-
I'll make a motion to approve the public facilities and improvements.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the public facilities and improvements totaling $210,000. Anyone speaking to the motion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Public services, MIHN, Min, Family Housing Self-Sufficiency Program, $9,000. Project funds will provide emergency housing for homeless families in North Worcester County, including case management and follow-up services once a family leaves the shelter. Overnight supervision is provided seven days a week. It is estimated that 20 families will be served during the program year, of which an estimated 50% or 10 families, unduplicated count, will originate from Fitchburg. Approximately 300 volunteers from nine local churches assist in the operation of the program, which includes the provision of three meals a day. Funds will support the salary of the operations manager. Min recently relocated to 758 Main Street in Lemonster. The new location has a 20-bed capacity and can hold three to five families at one time. Building leadership and inspiring self-sufficiency, $53,000. Project funds will be used to provide an after-school youth program, information and referral, food pantry, bilingual services to Latino residents, GED in Spanish, ESL, citizenship, civic and community engagement at Cleggorn Neighborhood Center. Funds will be used for staff salaries, additional part-time assistance in the after-school program, and related administrative costs. The agency operates citywide. It is estimated that 1,100 unduplicated count will be served. CNC is located at 218 Fairmont Street, and the youth center at 40 Fairmont Street. Spartacus Program, $9,000. Project funds will be used to support staff salary of a teen center Spartacus program, offering services to at-risk youths between ages of 13 and 18 who live in Fitchburg. Emphasis will be on youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility through physical fitness, team building, life skills training, and outdoor activities. It is estimated that 50 youth will be served. The after-school program will operate between September and June. The YMCA is located at 55 Wallace Ave in Fitchburg. Drug Enforcement and Patrol Program, $65,000. Project funds will be used to provide for police overtime expenses related to drug investigation activities in the CDBG strategic area, and foot motorcycle, bicycle patrols in the Main Street area. This project will help alleviate drug activity, violent crime, and property crime, which will benefit residents and businesses. Police activities include narcotics investigations, surveillance, undercover buys, search warrant services, and arrests. Transportation Services to After School Program, $16,000. Project funds will be used to provide one-way transportation from Fitchburg Schools to the Boys and Girls Club After School Program. The Fitchburg schools include Memorial, South Street, Rhinegold, Crocker, McKay, Longsjo, Sizer, and Fitchburg High School. It is estimated that approximately 1,440 transportation trips will be provided. The services for Fitchburg youth between the ages of eight and 18, it is estimated that 250 youth will be served. The club is located at 365 Lindell Street in Lemonster. Total public services come to $152,000.
Councilor Boishman.
Got a question. Do we have to go in order, or can we go randomly pick here on that?
I'd like to start in order, if we could, with anyone wishing to speak with particular concerns to Min. I'd like to start there and then work our way down through the list, if you would.
Well, the reason why I ask that question is I like to ask the chief something, and have to relate to-
When we, councilor, when we get to that point, we'll be sure to invite the chief up to respond to your concerns. So, I'd like to make sure that, before we move on to the next item, that no one has questions about Min Family Housing.
Councilor Green.
Do we have somebody here from Min?
Yeah. John Ho.
Okay.
Sure, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. If you could introduce yourself and your agency.
John Ho from Montezuma Intervent Hospitality Network. Want everybody?
So, my question is, in the two years previous that we've sat with CDBG monies, I've got numbers here from year '40 that say that seven residents from two families received services. That represents 29% of the total population served, which was 24 individuals. That was in year '40. And then year '41, estimated that 30 families will be served, which is an estimated 40%. So, can you tell me where we are for currently this year with your program?
Well, it's been, we've been in a tricky situation, because we've been transitioning. We moved during this past fiscal year, our fiscal year goes January to end of December, we moved physically from Fitchburg to Lemonster. We had a six-month renovation project going on over in Lemonster to get the building ready for the move. We had limiting factors here in Fitchburg at our site. Originally, when Min went into, came into Fitchburg, they, it was before my time, they had a three-family apartment house on Pleasant Street, and the agency was thinking that they could service seven families at a time. Well, due to regulations and zoning and fire department and the whole nine yards, that wasn't allowed, and this is all historical that I've heard. So, they were limited to three families at a time, so that really affected how many families could be served. Now that we're in Lemonster, we can serve five families at a time, because we own our own building now. We don't have any landlords telling us this, that, or whatever, so we're able to work with more families, and that's what we can hope to expect. We generally have a waiting list from the local area, Fitchburg, Lemonster are the number ones on the list, and then we go to other areas. We always prioritize anyone from Fitchburg or Lemonster first, especially if there's a traumatic situation like a fire that we've had, fires that seem to have been happening most recently in our communities during the winter, and we try to be able to respond to that if we have an open bedroom.
And did you have open availability for the three fires that we've had?
We had open availability for a fire in Lemonster fairly recently, and we did accept the family, but then they found alternate accommodations, so we didn't take the family in. It's hit or miss, you know? If the bedroom's full, there's nothing we can do at that given moment, and nobody knows when an emergency fire is going to happen, you know?
Right. And what now is the average length of stay with your families?
The average length of stay is three to four months. That's by design. Some families move on sooner, some longer. It depends on the situation. We try not to have hardcore, you know, draw the line in the sand, you've reached, you know, 160 days, you need to go kind of thing, because some of our families are really working it every day to try to get into their own place. And to find an apartment for the rent that they can afford, it's no easy task nowadays. You know, I don't know if I could do it, so, and with the salaries that they're able to have on their jobs, it's a major challenge.
What will this $9,000 specifically be used for?
We have an operations manager who helps us keep everything straight with regard to the grants that we go for, the donations that we get, the, you know, the families that come in. She helps with the intakes. You know, she's a big core of our program, and that goes specifically to her salary. So, it's a core, it's a core business of the agency. She's been with us for four years. She's a solid worker, and she's a, we definitely want to hang on to her.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Caddy.
Are there any other communities that grant you these monies?
We get some CDBG from Lemonster also.
How much do they give you? Do you know?
We, last year, we got like $5,000. This year, we've requested a little more, because we're now in Lemonster, and we're having to upkeep our own property now, which is new for us. You know, lawn care, snow plowing, you know, oil, which this winter, we caught a break on oil this winter, but the winter before, we wouldn't have. So, and those were all unknowns. It's a 5,000-square-foot building, so-
Any other communities donate?
Not CPG funds, no.
Thank you.
Councilor Joseph.
How many different locations has this family shelter been in since its existence?
I think five.
So, it's a homeless, homeless shelter?
Well, it was a shelter, the model, when it first started back in 2003, was to move from church to church to church. So, homeless families would go to maybe your church, stay there a week or two, then go to your church, and then go to your church, and that's how it worked. But then the Station Nightclub fire happened in Rhode Island, okay? And we all clamped down on fires and sprinklers and having them in old buildings, and-
And a lot of the old churches didn't have the sprinklers, so they didn't want people to sleep there. So in Massachusetts, we changed the model, at least for our agency. And they've been on the hunt for a permanent home, really since day one, but funding was an issue. You know, they didn't, it's not like they had $400,000 to go buy a building that could house all of this. And recently, you know, since I've been hired, we were able to pull that off.
I always, I don't deny the need for the services that you provide, okay? And I don't deny the need for the money that you have to have to come in. I do appreciate the fact that it was started by a faith-based organization that was going to go from church to church to church. That's why the Interfaith Hospitality Network is right in. So I always have had a problem with government funding an interfaith hospitality network that has to do with a faith-based organization. And I know that they've said that there's never any kind of faith-based...
Yeah, there isn't.
...influence into their family lives and stuff like that, but I mean, they've been at St. Cecilia's Church, they've been at St. Bernard's Church, they've been at, you know, it's been church, church, house, church, church. So I just, I always have a hard time...
But why do you think that was, though? Why do you think that they went from St. Cecilia's to this church to that church?
Because it's an interfaith hospitality network.
Because that's who would, who would take them.
Right.
Who would fund it, who would help them. No one else did, you know? So good for them for stepping up, in the way I view it. Now we own our own building. It's not a church, it's not a, you know, you know, a place where nuns used to live. It's not, you know, it's not a rectory. It's a building, it's a home. So we're, hopefully, I don't know, I can't change the path. It is what it is, and we just try to help the people in the community.
Counsel Green.
What was your operating budget last year?
The entire agency?
Mm-hmm.
$220,000.
And how much of that was based on grants that you received?
Probably 100, I'm estimating, mating on the fly, maybe 150,000. The rest was donations, fundraising, and...
All right. And when you talk about maintaining of the property that you now own...
Yeah.
If you've got people that are in transition, hear me out on this, this may be a crazy idea, but would it not make sense to ask those people for help, you know, around, you know, to upkeep, to snow blow, to clear off the sidewalk? I mean, to paint the outside? I mean, would it not hurt to ask the people who are taking, who are utilizing the services?
You mean people that are living there?
Yeah.
Yeah. We do that now.
Okay.
That's how we, how we upkeep the entire house. We don't have a housekeeper for a 5,000-square-foot building where five families live and 20 people live every day. Imagine how dirty that place would get with 20 people. You know, it's like having your family over every night, you know? You're all extended family. But we're looking at a foot of snow potentially on Sunday into Monday. Our families will be shoveling. That's how it gets done. And anybody that's been to our site, our ramp is like, you know, a cattle, a cattle path where you have to go around and around and around and around, and we have a concise driveway, but that's how it gets done.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counsel Boesmer.
I want, first of all, I want to call and ask you a question. I should have went down there, but I didn't know where you were located in the morning. But my second question to you is, I remember Governor Baker saying to the public when he came in, that we're spending too much money on shelters at the Hotel A and everything else. And you started a program, you got a program, and I thought Governor Baker was going to take care of that kind of problem where families that were homeless, he was going to find homes for them.
Mm-hmm.
What's wrong with the government doing their job?
I don't, I don't control the government.
I mean, if they're homeless...
Yeah.
...and they need shelter...
Yeah.
Right? The government was, I thought the government was going to take over. They would put them in a hotel for a day, and then they find a home to go into, a residential of their own, where they're paying rent or they're paying whatever, with the help of the government.
Well, there is, there are some of those services out there, there just isn't enough.
There's not enough? All right.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry, under Drug Enforcement and Patrol Program, $65,000, that seems lower than the past. Usually, we have that other column that shows what we gave them the week before, the year before.
Counsel Clark, I hate to interrupt. If we could just finish with Min, and then happy to move on to the Drug Enforcement after a couple of others? That way, we can handle it in order.
Isn't that in the same area?
It's in the same group, but certainly just to avoid shuffling different agencies back and forth at the table.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, if I may, one of the responsibilities our staff has administering the program is to develop contracts with each one of these agencies that has specific targets and reporting requirements, and they have to monitor their performance. So we have a performance measurement information, if you're interested, through the first two quarters of this year. If you have any questions about, well, how many people did they actually serve this year, or have they served so far, we can give you that information. I have it right here.
That'd be helpful if you could distribute that information by the clerk to the council, or directly to the council.
Or I can be, I'd be happy to just, you know, let you know. In the case of MIHM, a question was asked earlier. As of the second quarter, a total of 28 persons were served, and 19 of them were from Fitchburg. The average length of stay was 78 days, which is pretty consistent with what John was saying.
Thank you, Mr. Cassas. Is there any further questions for Min? Thank you, sir. Building Leadership and Inspiring Self-Sufficiency. Are there any questions from counselors? Counsel Green?
Well, I believe that we...
Do we have someone from the, thank you, Ms. Dos Santos? Good evening. Counsel Green, the floor is yours.
Again, I see this number again, again requested. And I'm glad that we have the numbers in place because I see that each year, it seems to be less and less people that we're actually reaching. I, no, more people. Year '40 was 587 people, '41 was 1,150 people. And Larry, do you have the numbers for this year?
As of the second quarter, it's 584.
All right. And what exactly do they leave the center with? If they're taking, if they're involved in this specific program, Inspiring Self-Sufficiency, how well are we doing, or how well are you doing with Inspiring Self-Sufficiency?
So I'll tell you the idea of how the center works. And the center is like a holistic approach, right? Somebody can come in for, they need a food, and we can talk to them, and we're like, oh, well, you don't have your GED, why don't you take your GED classes? Or they might have a child in school that needs help with homework, and then we connect them to the after-school program. So depending on the need, we try to assess the family as a whole and what their needs are. And the idea is that they come for something, and that we follow through until their needs are met, and hopefully engage them into work beyond providing services. So we have a transportation campaign, for example, that talks about transportation access, and a lot of our families have needs with transportation, so we connect them to that work. So I would say that they need, either with their needs satisfied, or connected to something bigger, educational, leadership, or whatever they're interested in.
What is your rate of success of having these people become employed?
It depends. Not everybody comes in for employment, so usually, we help them with resumes, and we help them with, we refer them to career center or other educational opportunities or trainings. So sometimes they come back and they tell us, sometimes they don't. So we don't necessarily are able to track, but we, what we do is, if we send them out with a resume or something, we try to follow up with them, like, hey, what's the resume all said? Do you need anything else? To make sure that that need is met. So I don't have numbers necessarily, but I could tell you that we do follow through with them to make sure that their need was met.
Are you seeing same families year after year after year?
It varies. I could tell you, in the after-school program, we have kids studying kindergarten and other preteens that we're seeing right now, and there's families that we see once and we never see again. So it really varies, especially depending on, Cleggorn is a very transient neighborhood, so sometimes we see a lot of people who walk to the center and get services from the center, and then if they move, we don't see them again. Or sometimes families move, and they can come in for different services or classes or whatever. So it really varies.
Is the United Neighbors of Fitchburg, are you involved in any of the backpacks that are given out on Friday afternoons to the schoolchildren that are leaving that need food through the weekend?
We are not involved with that, but we are involved with the schools. We have a partnership when the schools gives us snacks for the kids after school, so we do, are able to provide healthy snacks from the schools. And we are looking to partner with the Spanish-American Center to offer dinner for our T-9 programs. And we also have summer breakfast and lunch programs as well.
Thank you.
Counsel Boesmer.
As she knows, I was down there. I want to talk about this program. I think it's a very good program for the city of Fitchburg. It helps everyone in every community in our community. I've been there, and my big thing was the kids. I wanted to make sure they did their homework, and believe me, they have a place where they make them do their homework. They come in, and the first, some of them, the first place they go is do their homework. And they have a teacher from our Cushion Academy. He comes in, he sits with them, and he helps them, and then they do their things. I have seen, I've been there numerous times. I don't make an appointment to go down, and the other ones can tell you that I'm here, that I just show up because I don't like to be, I like to show up at times, this way you see everything. You don't see what they want you to see, you see everything. You see if it's working, you see what they're doing. I've been down there numerous times, during the day, and they service a lot of people, and the programs are really good, and it does help people. What I like to see is I believe, and I don't, I believe, and I told the mayor this before, and I told every mayor, I don't believe in workaday programs. I like to see the people that go to these programs learn skills, skills that they can take with them any place they go, and they can go to a job without being rented or hired, where somebody else is making money off their back, where they can get a permanent job with good benefits. And that, and that, that I like to see, and I've been pushing that, you can ask her. The program is really good, and I'll tell you, on all three, we ought to be ashamed of ourselves, ashamed of ourselves. You said 584 people, Larry, in this program?
Correct.
Okay. The next one coming up is going anywhere from 50 to 100, plus you've got a teen center. The one after that in Leominster, you've got 365 students. We got almost 1,000 students off the city streets, and we giving them something better than what we can give them. They got a place to go. When I was a kid, we didn't have these kind of programs. We had parks, the park department took care of us, and we could play baseball, and they had a farm week. We don't even have that anymore in the park department. So we're giving more money to the police department for overtime because we got a drug problem. But we're cutting back the essential things that we need in the city, and programs like this, these programs help the students of our city. They help them. I believe, and I said it a year ago, and I said it two years ago, an idle mine is a trouble mine. And if you go to some of these programs and you see what they're doing, they're very, very good for the city, and they're very, very good for the youth. And I believe Ernie, if he doesn't, if he says I'm right, said it last year, that a lot of these programs are very good, and it helps them out, not hurt them. It helps them because the kids are no longer on the streets hanging around. And a lot, we cut them. We cut our $3,000 from last year, we cut the other one $2,000, we cut the other one $1,000. And I look at myself, and I say, what are we doing? We got 1,000 kids that we don't have to worry about, and they're learning something. They're learning. They're not hanging around being punks, they're literally learning. And I don't understand our logic. I know we're short of money. I know we went down. But why take an asset like this that's going to be beneficial to the city and cut them? And we give it, no offense, chief, we give him the money that he needs to do just the opposite of what we can do right here. We can start the drugs, we can start the crime, we can start the kid from going, and on the way from a guy that's a punk, and he looks up to him, to go to her program, and the next program that's going to come in front of us, or the next one after that. That's all. This program is really good with all the other two programs that are going to come right before us. They're very, very good. I can vouch for it because I want to be saying that because if I had any doubts, I'd be the first one to criticize. And that, I'll tell you that. I'm very hard to please, and you ought to know that. You can hear my mouth sometime, and Counsel Caddy will vouch for that.
Mr. Cassas, could you just address, there is a methodology to how these funds, I know our total allotment from the federal government decreases every year, if I'm correct, by a small margin. Can you address, I believe there's a certain formula for how the funds can be doled out into these various buckets? And I guess Counsel Boesmer, I think, hit on a good point of, you know, there's cuts to a number of programs. I know our total bucket is going down. Can you talk about how the methodology works then for how the funds can be spent?
Certainly, counsel. There are caps for both administration and for public services, those two categories. And the public services cap, I think, was principally intended to limit the amount of funds that were not used for essentially infrastructure kinds of projects, the larger projects, because that's one of the principal purposes of the CDBG program. So when they created the program, they limited the amount of funding that could be spent on public service activities to 15% of the grant amount that we're receiving, plus the program income received from the prior year, or the year, actually, the year we're in right now. So we have to estimate how much program income we're going to be receiving through June 30th of this year. Add that to the entitlement amount and take 15% of that grant, that's how we come up with the cap on public services. So for this year, because our grant amount was reduced somewhat, the total was $152,000 available. In years past, I recall it being as high as $230,000, $240,000, back when we were receiving a much larger grant, and had also more program income from our revolving housing fund, so that it has necessitated that we continually reduce the amount of funding.
Thank you. Counsel Beazel.
Thank you, Counsel President. So to follow up Counsel Boesmer about skilled jobs, actually, was at a transportation meeting one time, and they talked about how transportation was so important within the city to provide people the opportunity to go to places to learn skilled jobs. At that meeting, I mentioned that I had looked at the Ma bus schedule, and there's no buses that run up to Monty Tech for the evening program, and there's no buses that run to the college at night for the evening programs. And I know this really is not something that, I was just looking for an opinion, I guess, is, do you feel that if there was added bus routes up in certain areas, that people would take advantage of actually going to Monty Tech at night to learn skilled jobs, or going to the college to learn more?
So we actually have a survey out, and we're asking people, where do they want to go, and what schedules they need? And we're still collecting data on that. But just preliminary information tells us that people want to definitely go to Mount Jesus Community College particularly. There's a lot of times ESR classes, some training classes that people want to take. Also, in conjunction with Mount Jesus Community College, we've been talking, and they have a student survey, and they have been finding needs. So there's definitely a need for that, and also busing for the second shift. Right now, buses end at 6:30, and actually, through the leadership and organizing work that we have been doing at the center, we were able to increase the Ma schedule for, by one hour, and also change the flagging of the buses, because before, you needed to flag, and we were finding that with some of the members of the Disability Commission who we'd be partnering with, that they couldn't flag the bus because they were blind. So we were able to change that, and now the buses need to stop at all the bus stops for that. bus stops um for that. Um, so we're definitely seeing that people do have an interest in particularly manufacturing and education and they will benefit from having, um, you know, actually also the mall. The people working at the mall, they the mall closes at nine, so they cannot get back home. Um, so certainly, and we also push for a bus to go to Devon's um for the manufacturing jobs and for Mount Utes Community College. So they actually put in A1 bus as a result of the of the work of the of the community that we brought together to meetings and and spoke about that.
Once you get that data together, can you send me?
Yes.
Copy of it. Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Joanna, I I just like that. I I got the um the pleasure of touring your facility this past year and meeting with not only you and your staff, but meeting to see um the the whole facility and and really see the scope of what it is um that you do there. And uh I I was, I guess I had always been under the um the the wrong understanding that you just serve the people of Cleggone and Counsel Boishman was right. I mean, the people that that were coming in and the services that you were providing to people from from all corners of Fitchburg, um, it was um it was inspiring to see and to see the number of my own residents who took advantage of the services that you have to offer and that you didn't turn anyone away based on the the geographic area and that um that it is a holistic approach, that you come in for food and um you're at there to advocate um uh on behalf of of the clients that come in. Um, I, you know, I don't think we have uh enough money and enough time to praise um organizations like yours and the work that you do in the community. So um, thank you for all that you do and keep up the good work. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to uh to building leadership and uh inspiring self-sufficiency?
And thank you for visiting and the invitation is open to everybody. I love to show you around and you can go unannounced.
Thank you. Spartacus Program. Any counselors with questions or concerns? Good evening.
Good evening. So David Cornell, who would normally be here to represent, sends his apologies. He got called out of town for another meeting, so I have the pleasure, Jennifer Gordon, to be here this evening.
Counselor Boishman.
Mr. President, I happened to be down in your ride yesterday. Not yesterday, the day before. I met the young lady as we're sitting in front and I was at, and I showed up there too unannounced and they took me tour of the shop, tour of what they do. I was very, very much impressed. Um, as a matter of fact, I gave a number and I hope the mayor doesn't get mad at me of John Delain because we were going to be hiring some people in the water department. And I was telling him what John Delain told me that the field is very good to work in and it's like a skilled job. And I was trying to talk, I told the young man that was taking me on the tour that he ought to really look at this possibility of getting some people to go to school at Monty Tech to take up that trade because if you get that trade, you can go almost anywhere in the country because everybody needs water and everybody drinks water and not everybody can do it and you need some kind of a license. And John Delain is going to take, you guys are going to go up to that place this week sometime, I believe, for a tour and he's going to explain to the uh the things, the program to him. Same in this program. When they come out of school, they just don't go play basketball. They just don't go in in the gym and work out or go around the track. They do their homework first and if they need help, they get help. And then they do it and they have records, right? If I'm not mistaken, you said? Go ahead. I let you explain. You do a better job.
No, that's it's all right. You're doing a great job. Um, so we had the pleasure of having Paul stop in and visit us unannounced. Um, but what a typical day would look like for um youth involved in our Spartacus program would involve homework help, uh report card check-ins. Our staff keeps very close contact with not only their parents, but with their teachers as to what exactly the students' needs or their trouble spots might be. Uh, after they do that, they do some peer work together. They have the groups, almost like small counseling groups where they might kind of hit the hot topics of what is affecting our youth today, anything from bullying to uh dating issues. And then from there, they can go downstairs and take part in physical activities. We have actual trainers down working with the children or the youth, I shouldn't call them children, youth, uh getting them set up in uh physical fitness regimens. And then after that, then they are allowed to have free time where they might choose to go swimming or they might choose to go play ball upstairs in the gymnasium. But it's very regimented and very monitored.
Now, one more thing may I say?
Counselor Boishman.
What I was really impressed with was in all young children, was uh teenagers and the young and the teenagers were about 15, 16, 17, and I believe 18. You said it was a couple of days, 19, right?
Yeah, it goes all the way up until 19. In fact, um, we had one of our um participants from the program actually go away to college this this year and um they came back every break. They had an opportunity. They were back down at the YMCA and just to see that little bit of development from a youth that I would consider a punk last year to that growth that took place where we actually took them on college tours. We helped scholarship them. So they went away to college for the year and they still kept coming back to the city and coming back to their home roots. So.
And what made me go down there, to be honest with you, Mr. President, was Larry Cassas because a year ago and two years ago, I wanted to cut the thing and Larry said, Paul, before you open your big mouth, why don't you go down there and look? So, and I did. So I was I was glad I did and I'm very happy uh with the program and I really think that mayor should really think about it because we're going to make some cuts, but you should, when we make the cuts tonight, I'm hoping that you would add the money to these people to give them what they asked for. I know some of them you can't, but if you can give them equal to last year or a little bit more.
Can I give you some pom poms?
Huh?
Can I give you some pom poms? Thank you.
And we always advocate for uh for advanced booking for any uh any stop-in visits.
It's okay. Anyone is welcome anytime to come down and visit us. That's all right.
Any other questions, concerns?
One other question. How many students did I say? Did I tell them how many students you take care of?
Well, particularly in the Spartacus program, we're budget around 50, but we typically have anywhere 50 to 60. It runs a little bit askew. We take in our teen drop-in center, sees 500 kids a week per week and a majority of, a lot of them come right from Long Joe Middle School, right down into the program. We actually just started this year with Long Joe, our swimming program with a couple of classrooms. So there are plenty of uh teens and young adults that are down in our building in the afternoon.
Thanks for all you do for our city's residents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me come in.
Drug enforcement and patrol program, Chief Mardel. Did you have something you'd like to say or would you like to open this up for questions?
Open it up for questions.
All right. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry for jumping down a little bit earlier. I think the mayor also straightened me out on this particular item and and maybe I can get some more answers here about that program. Uh, $65,000. I I think, you know, in the past we've received more, so this is continuing to to go down. Chief, is this, did you ask for this amount or was this pretty much level funded or?
Pretty much level funded. I saw where it went last year and uh this seemed like an appropriate number that we could hope to get again this year. Um, I was pleased with the number. If if, you know, it came from the mayor's office and whatever this body decides, I'm comfortable with too. All the programs that came before me, they're all legitimate programs. They all serve a purpose in the city. Um, but what I can say is is the work that we're doing because of this funding, we we couldn't sustain the level of narcotic investigations we do on a daily basis without the support of CDBG. Um, last year, we did almost a search warrant affidavit every week of the year, almost 50 search warrant affidavits last year. Um, we confiscated hundreds of thousands of dollars last year in drug forfeiture money. Um, we took dozens and dozens of handguns off the streets of our city. Um, in addition, we also were able to provide some support downtown. I think we initiated almost 100 patrol shifts downtown of wa- walking foot patrols and motorcycle patrols. These items wouldn't be sustainable within our budget. So for that, I'm very appreciative. Um, you you, counsel, you're you're dead right. These other programs behind me are all all have merit, uh, but I would hate to see us not have the opportunity to do this with the funds and what we're able to provide the city of Fitchburg.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Larry.
Counselor Boishman.
Chief, what I have a hard time with when we talk about Main Street, we give an officer, I don't like to wear the cop, we give an officer, a patrolman, overtime to walk the beat. But yet, and we walk the beat and we look at empty buildings and we fix our ties and we fix our hat and we make sure our heads comb when we're walking up Main Street because a lot of the buildings are empty. But yet we'll cut, and I like to call it cut, programs that help you out. We take 1,000 students off the city streets between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 o'clock at night, 1,000. We know they're safe. We know they're sound. We know they're learning something. But we'll give you overtime to walk up Main Street in front of empty buildings and I have a hard time swallowing that, a very hard time. And if you want $65,000 and we if we cut this, which I'm probably going to ask to cut, I'll ask the mayor to put it in your budget come budget time. I really believe wholeheartedly in the three programs that came before us, wholeheartedly, I believe that it helps them out enormously, a lot more than what we think that we think. I I think it, the young lady over there just said she got 18, 19-year-old kids going to her thing. They're not on the street causing trouble. They're there and they're doing good things. Why ruin something? That's all I have to say.
May I respond to that?
Please, chief.
First of all, I take great exception. None of my police officers are looking in the uh empty windows combing their hair. They're serving a purpose on Main Street. This city has a perception problem and we're going to correct that perception problem, making people feel safe when they see a police officer walking on Main Street. That's a perception that we have a city that's vibrant and safe. Um, they're not, they're not going to the prom. They're not fixing their hair. They're serving a purpose on Main Street. Um, if we didn't have them on Main Street, things would be a lot different down there. The city's made a large commitment to the Main Street area and we're going to continue to make a commitment to that Main Street area. But it's the perception of the city and when someone comes over to the bridge and they see a police officer standing and walking down Main Street, the perception is that our city's safe and our city is safe and we're going to continue that. Now, last year during this funding, I was able to take this funds and and go through through to September. I saw the importance of this program and we actually worked it into our operating budget that I continued it through November. Um, I would love to have more money in here to continue that program because I saw the need of it because out of this, out of this 65K, we'll spend roughly 15,000 of that on foot patrols and and other areas in the CDBG. That 15,000 dollars will only get me about 104-hour patrol shifts. Um, like I said, we ran out of that come August and we went into our operating budget because I saw the importance behind it. Um, we were getting calls from people that uh college student parents saying that they saw a police officer in the corner of Main and Day. He wasn't looking in the mirror fixing his hair. He was serving a purpose there and and I hope to continue that. So I I agree. All these other programs are important, but the perception of the city is is paramount and I think having a police officer walking the beat at specific times and day uh goes a long way. So.
Going to firmly wear my Ward 4 hat for a moment and and chief not only praise you for um the past efforts as a result of this funding, uh, but also take exception to Counselor Boishman's comments that uh we are defeating a perception issue. We talk about with thousands of college students on our doorstep of Main Street that we've been trying to attract to Main Street for decades. Um, when we talk about how we get them back down Main Street, we don't do that unless they feel safe, unless the streets are well lit, unless they feel safe that they can walk down Main Street, um, and that if there's an issue that there'll be someone there to confront the issue. The university can make it as safe as they want up until the end of North Street. What it is our responsibility is the city to make sure that our city's gateways are are clean and safe. Chief, you've done a tremendous job. Every time I've seen a walking patrol, I get, you know, I get phone calls from my residents saying, when did this start? This is great. Uh, so for the past two years, we we've received multiple phone calls. Um, uh, every time these walking patrols have been instituted, I see people in in parks being approached by your officers. It's always the case, um, it it's usually the perception that, you know, you only see a police officer when something has gone wrong. And it's great to see a police officer when things are going right, when you're enjoying the downtown with your family, uh, when you're at a park uh like Riverfront Park and the police officer comes up and talks to you and how's your day? How's everything going? Um, it it not only creates that perception of safety, but it creates that um that faith um that the police are there at all times when you need them. Um, and I think that's uh that's essential to building the relationship between community and police. That's the only way police can do good work is when the community are an active player in that. So I think this goes a long way to building and restoring that goodwill. Um, but I'll also say that many of the phone calls that I get, um, thanking the city about uh the walking patrols downtown are those from the businesses uh and the nonprofit organizations that say, you know, thank you. For years, we've been having issues and it's cleaned up. It's getting better. We see the light at the end of the tunnel, whether it's from the Fitchburg Art Museum when they were having some issues. They called and you were on it and the walking patrols were a were a real presence and force down there. Um, and uh not only did they comment on it, but their visitors, but but local businesses like Shacks were commenting on, this is great to see. We need more of this. Um, so, you know, I wish I could give you 565,000 dollars to increase our patrols down there because it's it's not just about, you know, throwing cuffs on people. It's it's about educating. It's about improving our our city's perception and keeping our people safe. So thanks for all that you continue to do and I'll continue to advocate that um we don't only maintain, but we increase this this line item. Counsel Green.
I would just have to uh follow that up. I'm a big supporter of the foot patrol program. Um, and again, this year in budget, I'll strongly suggest that we continue that program for as long as we can. I I do want to just ask probably a touchy subject matter and that is, when we provide police overtime to do this patrol, are those the senior on the staff that are getting the overtime at a higher rate than like a junior officer? Like, is there a a disc, is there a separation between salaries, I guess? Like, would it be cheaper to put on a a junior patrol officer versus a senior patrol officer? I don't even know if that, if that even exists.
99% of these patrols are filled by patrolmen. Uh, patrolmen is one, and you could have a patrolman as a first-level patrolman or you could have a top-step patrolman. So it's going to be one of those, you you typically won't see a lieutenant or sergeant or a captain taking these patrols because it gets distributed amongst the patrolmen first. On the rare occasion that we have an activity and no one's available, I may have a sergeant take it or I may have a lieutenant take it. But I would say 99% of the overtime that's generated uh through CDBG money um in these target areas are patrolmen at either level one through three.
And at this funding at 65,000 dollars, will that get us through another, I mean, I would like to think that spring is on our doorstep and that we're going to start that patrol quickly?
If this money, if this 65,000 dollars comes to the police department, I'm going to allocate, just like last year, 50,000 dollars of it towards our narcotic uh investigations and 15,000 dollars towards um specific patrols downtown, whether it's foot, motorcycle or bicycle. Last year, like I said, that took me about 104 shifts, which got me to about September. Um, I I felt not the pressure, but I I felt the uh the community downtown uh really enjoyed having a police officer downtown. There was such great positive feedback um and we were able to provide that same support for the remainder of that year um through our operating budget. Um, I I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know if that's going to be feasible as we enter into a new a new fiscal year. Uh, but that's, I saw the importance behind it last year and we continued that program for another two months, um, doing just that.
I appreciate that. Moving forward, knowing that then we've got, you know, we're right on the cusp of, you know, coming down North Street and turning right to get onto Main Street, but we're we're right on the cusp of coming down North Street and, you know, turning left, Morin Square, Summer Street, Lunenburg Street. What is going to be the feasibility of being able to add foot patrol when that when that area becomes more developed as well?
Uh, I'd like to see it expand even further, keep in mind, this money has to be spent within the target areas. Um, but there's areas outside this target area that definitely need concern as well. Um, you know, expanding into the college area. Uh, right now, creating that presence on Main Street, lower middle Main Street, there's a lot of needs happening at the library uh recently. Um, I I have to get some foot patrols back in that area, Monument Park area. Um, spring's coming. The the weather's breaking and we're having a lot of activity on Main Street. It's imperative I start filling this. In fact, I issued an order a a couple of months ago to all patrol divisions. In fact, I issued an order a couple of months ago to all patrol divisions. When we have additional manpower, and we don't usually have it, but when we do have it, any and all additional manpower is sent to the Main Street area in some type of foot patrol capacity. It's not happening every day, but anytime we do have extra manpower, I'm assigning them to that, to this specific area.
Is this something that we could partner with our, with the pilot program that you have going on with the academy, or with Wes Boylston, I guess, with the training facility there, that we could have those officers help?
No, that would be a little different. Those officers, are you talking specifically to the reserve police officers?
Yes.
Their role is more in a student-learning role, and it's imperative that they're working directly with a senior police officer, learning how to become a police officer. What I want out of Main Street is some senior officers or seasoned police officers to know how to communicate with people. My goal is to engage the community in a positive manner, not be seen as throwing handcuffs on. That's what, that's the beauty behind this, is we're in positive engagement with the community, and it's going to go, I mean, that's the road we're going back to. We're going back to our community policing roots and having those types of positive engagements. And we're going to get better results out of senior officers that know how to effectively communicate with people. These reserve police officers, they're in a learning mode. They need to learn how to be a police officer first.
Okay. Thank you for your efforts.
Counsel Beazel.
Thank you. I guess I just want to make a comment on this. I mean, this is community policing. And I could tell you when I was on the parks department and motorcycles would go to the parks, all the kids would run up to the motorcycles, and they would all interact with the police officers. And you see it all the time, police officers on bicycles, talking to the children. And maybe they can direct some of these children to some of these organizations and actually provide them with some stability in their life. The other thing, too, about having somebody on Main Street all the time, I know that patrolmen get to know who the players are downtown. They can tell you who should be where at what time and who doesn't belong in certain locations. So I can't say enough about, you know, if we can do anything to help community policing, we definitely need to do it because, like I said, I know that, there was one time in particular down at the pool, and this police officer was just razzing with the kids back and forth. And it was great to see that. It was great to see police officers having that relationship with the kids at an early age. And I'm all for community policing. I think this is great. And like I said, you put a couple experienced police officers on Main Street, and they're going to pick up very quickly who should be where they should be and who shouldn't. So, thank you.
Counsel Joseph.
I guess my comment is similar to Counsel Beazel's. I remember distinctly going down to Coolidge Park on one of my walks and seeing Officer McCall interacting with the youth that was down there, talking with them and joking with them and being a positive role model. And to me, that's what the kids that are at these programs need, is positive role models and having the officers on Main Street. Who's on Main Street between the hours of 2:00 and 7:00 o'clock is the youth. I mean, they're going to espresso pizza, they're going to different places, they're going from Long Show. That's who I see on Main Street between the hours of 2:00 and 7:00 o'clock in the afternoon is the youth of the city of Fitchburg. Anything that we could have with positive interaction with the police officers can do just as much good for them as the youth programs that we see, positive role modeling. And I think that that is imperative to the kids that are in Fitchburg, that they get to know the officers, get to know the things that they can do for them. And it gives them a friend that they can go to in case they need to be steered the right way as opposed to the wrong way. So I think that the patrol officers on Main Street is a steering mechanism to get the kids to go in the right direction. As like you said, just like these programs are, I see that to be also a steering mechanism for these kids to go in the positive direction as opposed to a negative direction.
Counsel Boishman.
Chief, I hope you don't take me wrong when I said you're standing in front of the mirror. I didn't mean it that way if you took it that way. And when I drive by my car, I look and I can see my car, the exact same line. So I'm just saying that as a figure of speech. I'm not saying that they're doing this. If you took it that way, I apologize. I didn't mean it that way.
Well, it's not how I took it, Counsel. It's how the viewers might have took it on TV this evening. These police officers are serving a purpose on Main Street, a purpose that is serving the community very well. And I'm going to continue it as long as I'm chief to have that type of positive engagement. I wish I could spend more than $15,000. And one side note, too, on the drug enforcement part of it, if you read the paper today, you can see the success our drug units doing with a large breakup of a heroin and fentanyl ring in Northwestern County, the work of the Drug Task Force. You know, a lot of those areas were in the CDBG area. So that's the type of work you're getting. We're disrupting these large rings of heroin and fentanyl coming into our city, which is a major catalyst in this opiate epidemic. So, that being said, I'm very appreciative of the money and the support the city council and the mayor has given the police department over the years, and I hope that you continue to support us.
Counsel Caddy.
I just, I thought the mayor was leaving. I was getting nervous. I want him to hear me, though. Is mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. I just, in my experience, having walked Main Street for three years as a policeman, I think that putting 100 shifts on Main Street, and I know, Chief, you're going to know what I'm talking about, putting 100 shifts on Main Street, to me, doesn't cut it. You have different guys working all the time. Main Street should have a full-time, dedicated, senior patrolman working year-round, and you'll be 10 times more effective than having one guy one day, another guy the other day. We have five, six cruiser routes in the city. I think Main Street is as important as any other cruiser route that we could have. I know it comes down to funding, which is why I wanted the mayor to listen to this, but it comes down to funding. I hope that in next year's budget, you're able to put in for more policemen. And I'm hoping that if you do, and it happens, that we could have a dedicated, full-time walking policeman on Main Street. Thank you, mayor.
Any other questions for the chief? Next, we have transportation services to after-school programs. I believe we have Donanna Martin here this evening.
She's not at, and she's ill. She literally just walked out sick. I'm actually on the board of the Boys and Girls Club. I'm happy to represent the club just because she came here not feeling well and just left.
Mr. Doohan, if you wouldn't mind, is there anyone with questions for, okay. Good evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll do the best I can.
Mine's just going to be a numbers question. What is the amount of students that we're actually transporting now to the Boys and Girls Club?
I believe the number I have is 308 Fitchburg youth were served, eight were, did not have CDBG transportation. 308 total Fitchburg youth were served.
Okay. And out of that?
300 received transportation through the...
Okay, through this program?
Yes.
All right. And is, I don't know if you would know this question, is the fare that's charged from first student and MART, is that a regulated fee? Is that a bidded process for this contract to transport these students?
I'm not sure exactly how the Boys and Girls Club does their procurement.
Sorry, Donanna. I know you're not feeling well.
I can't...
So, what's your question?
My question was, between MART and first student?
It's only first student that uses.
Oh, okay. So MART no longer, okay, so just first student. Is that a bidded process on their fee that they charge for the transportation?
They, yes, they do bid on that. So it's only the one, it's only the one bus company that we can use because MART doesn't go to the school. They can't pick up at the school. So we just, so it's first student that we work with.
Okay. And that's the only choice?
That's the only choice. That's the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Beazel.
Thank you. I'm sorry to put you through this, but what is the actual total cost that the Boys and Girls Club incurs for transporting the students? I don't know if you have that number or not.
So right now, I'm just about averaging, I can give you an average, $5,400 a month.
$5,400 a month for how many months?
Each month for 10 months.
10 months.
So September through June.
So that's $54,000.
Right.
Okay. The reason why I say that is because you and I kind of teamed up when we were in Fitchburg, and it was a shame to see that you had to leave that location. But when you moved to Lemonster, I just want to know that Donanna made a commitment not to leave the kids from Fitchburg behind. And she fought very hard to make sure that all of the kids were gone to Lemonster. And as you can see, from what we're actually giving to what it actually costs, I just want to thank you very much for doing that. And the things that these kids experience at this club, I can't say enough about how many good things. Safe, loving environment. I mean, these kids here are just treated extremely well. So I just wanted to thank you, and I want to thank the Boys and Girls Club for continuing that effort on behalf of the kids of Fitchburg. Thank you.
Counsel Green.
How many actual other communities send children to the Boys and Girls Club?
Lemonster.
Mm-hmm.
So we do have some home-school children. We have children from the parochial schools. We have children from Fitchburg who are not part of CDBG, which is, I believe, Monty Tech. And I have my report in front of me. There are two schools, FLAC.
Okay. All right. I was just trying to estimate, like, if there were three or four large communities that were sending children to or providing transportation to your club, you could say, okay, well, that, you know, our $16,000 is, you know, a third of the other communities that are contributing. Does...
Lemonster bus, the kids, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Beazel.
I guess so, to piggyback on that, I guess the issue really came about where, and stop me if I'm wrong on this, that the school department, because they were actually going to Lemonster, the contract was for Fitchburg so that the kids couldn't get on the school bus and actually be dropped off in Lemonster. It wouldn't take them to the Boys and Girls Club. And that's why they've had to foot the bill for the transportation from Fitchburg to the Boys and Girls Club. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, the school department can't go over the line, I believe, from Fitchburg into Lemonster.
So they foot the full bill for, including this money and the other monies involved, to actually bring the kids over the line, which it's probably, what, 100 yards over the line?
Yeah, I think the bus turns around at the Kmart Plaza, right there, and turns around and goes back.
If there was any way that the school could do something for them, I greatly would support that, so.
Ms. Martin, your facilities rival that of institutions of higher ed, and what you're able to provide the students of Fitchburg is tremendous. And the fact that we pay less than a third of the total value of transportation just says the tremendous return that we get on our investment of $16,000. So I'm appreciative of all that you give and all that you, your board members and your facility provide for Fitchburg students and look forward to many more years of Fitchburg students being able to go to the Boys and Girls Club. Any further questions for Ms. Martin?
Motion to approve public services.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve public services at the $152,000. Speaking to the motion, Counsel Boishman.
I'm going to wait to cut $4,000 off of AMH.
We have a motion on the floor, Counselor. Any other? Okay. We have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Feel better. Economic Development. Small Business Technical Assistance Program, an amount of $20,000. Project funds will provide outreach and technical assistance to businesses. This program leverages loans for small businesses. Additional staff time will be used to address business development related to north of Main Street project. It is estimated that 40 businesses will be served, 60 jobs will be created and retained and/or retained. 40 businesses will be counseled. Four loans with a value of $100,000 total will be facilitated. 25 business plans will be developed, and 10 businesses will be trained. Funds will be used to pay staff salary. The CDC recently changed its name to New View Communities in 2015 and expanded its service area to include all of northern central Massachusetts. The office is located at 470 Main Street in Fitchburg. Mr. Doohan is here in attendance. Are there any questions for Mr. Doohan? Counsel Green.
Right now, you know, we're not quite halfway through the year, but are you working with any businesses currently for location or opening of jobs and/or businesses on Main Street?
Yes. We've, so far, just for the year, to, based on what Counsel Kusumerak has told you, we've reached about 68% of our goals for jobs created and retained, even though we're halfway through the year, about 60% for businesses counseled. We've done halfway through the number of loans. We've done 300% of the loans, of the dollar value of the loans, and 60% of the business plans created. Right now, we're working with Eddie's Music, who has just opened, not quite on Main Street. We've also working very extensively with Beamers to, we work very closely with them, encouraging them, when that building burned down, to relocate to Main Street, and have been working with them not only on a business plan, but helping them, putting together a financing package for them, and also working closely with Mary Jo Bohart and the mayor's office on trying to resolve the issues related to broadband that's there. In addition, we work with a fair number of other businesses that have already been on Main Street, just to continue to provide them with additional services and support.
Thank you.
Mr. Doohan, I'll just add, Mark. I see you at every meeting in this city. You're seemingly at all places at all times involved, and I know it's not just you, but it's your staff. And the services that you provide, not only to the businesses, but the residents in the city, is incredible. I realize I've spoken glowingly just about every applicant here, but honestly, I couldn't say enough about the services that New View Communities provides. And, you know, Fitchburg has continued to move forward, and I see New View Communities as a large part of that reason. So thank you for your ongoing support in supporting our business communities and all that you will continue to do in the future.
Thank you, Counselor.
Motion that we approve the economic development portion.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the total economic development package at the amount of $20,000. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doohan. Clearance activities demolition at the amount of $188,000, 243 and 4 cents. Project funds will be used to remove abandoned structures primarily in the CDBG strategy area, which pose an immediate threat to public safety and which contribute to slums and blight. Although the entire city is CDBG eligible, it is estimated that eight buildings containing up to 20 units will be demolished. Consultants will be hired for specific expertise, such as environmental assessment. Consultants will be hired for specific expertise, such as environmental assessment and engineering services. I just want to say, this has been something that I know the council has been requesting for years. I know barely a month goes by that councils aren't adamantly screaming or requesting for additional funding to demolition. At least, in my time on council, this is the first time I've seen so much money allocated to demolition. So, I would like to commend, applaud, and praise our mayor for really listening to our concerns, our feedback, as well as the communities, in allocating such funding to demolition. We have blighted areas. We have properties that come before us for special permit requests, and councils are wondering what happens if these properties remain vacant for long. One-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars won't cure all of the blighted properties in this city, but it's nice to see this start, and it's nice to see a commitment to helping improve areas and really recognizing that some buildings will be best served to come down if we want neighborhoods to improve. So, Mayor DiNatale, thank you for your commitment in this way. That's it. Counsel Green.
Is this, is one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars, is that the cap? Is that the most that we could request through CDBG?
Well, the request was actually three-hundred thousand.
Right, I see that.
The application was. And certainly, it would not be difficult to make the argument that the entire block grant and more could be spent on demolition of properties that are in condition that is so dangerous or unsafe that they really should be considered for that. But as with the discussion on public service activities, unfortunately, we have so many needs that we're trying to address with this ever-dwindling pot of funding, and so it puts us in the position where we are trying to be as balanced as possible. And I think that's what the Planning Board did in their deliberations and their recommendations to the mayor, and I think that's what the mayor did in ultimately coming up with this package.
Right. I mean, I love the fact that we're moving forward, but, again, just in the short amount of time that I've sat on council, and in the NICE committee, which is one of my favorite committees to sit on, is that, you know, we're, one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars, we're never going to get, we're never going to get ahead of the curve, knowing that at our NICE meeting today, there were, you know, another ten or eleven properties that are now on our radar. So, I mean, I've said this, you know, openly to the mayor, that, you know, I would be a fan of, you know, taking a million dollars out of stabilization and getting a handle on some of these properties that neighbors and residents have looked at and have put up with for ten to fifteen years. So, at one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars, just for the public, that's four or five buildings? We'll say residential. Would that be four or five, could that be four or five residential properties?
It could be, of course, depending on the property. There are a lot of factors that determine what the cost will be for a particular project, you know, how easily accessible it is from the street, if the wrecking crew can set up staging properly, if there is not or is a lot of environmental cleanup required, if there's a lot of asbestos on the property, that adds significantly to the cost. So, there are a lot of factors, but yeah, you could cover typically for properties with that funding. I would say, though, that we do have a tentative commitment from the Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority, at least for any properties that we may consider demolishing within the urban renewal area, to contribute to the cost of any demolition there, because that is an eligible activity with their urban renewal grant. So, we're hoping that will complement. We also have an insurance payout from one property that was badly fire damaged, as you know. And our insurer, the city's insurer, has offered us to contribute a small amount, ten thousand dollars, to, if we proceed with the demolition of the central fire station, because it's jeopardizing a property that it's abiding.
Right. I guess my sense was that I want people to, you know, to have a real understanding of one-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars, that's maybe four or five properties. And then that money is gone, and then it's another year before money comes available for us again. So, it's a nice start, but it's not nearly enough. As we know, we talk about it every other week. So, thank you. I commend your efforts on, and to the mayor, too, at least, you know, taking, it's a good start. Thank you.
Counsel Bezos.
Thank you. Larry, how many buildings do we have that need to be demoed?
Well, there are many abandoned properties or vacant properties, and the process that we go about that often leads to demolition is that we send out our code enforcement team, including the Board of Health, the Building Department, and the Fire Department, and the Planning Department, to look at the properties from their various lenses to make a determination as to how relatively bad a property may be. Some properties are reasonably intact, even though they're vacant, and others have structural issues or problems or open to the weather. And we try to rank them in terms of the level of concern that they raise for the community. And that means that they're troubled properties, not that we're going to demolish them. The private property owners have the right of the due course of law, and we don't actually make a determination to demolish a property until after we notify the owners of all of the properties that we have real concerns about, that we'd like them to address those problems. When they fail to do that, the Building Department will enforce the Building Code, Chapter 143, the Building Code, and they will send out a survey team, which is prescribed under the code, to review the property. And if they find that it meets the conditions for demolition, and there are several conditions that they look and they have to cite, if they find that it meets those conditions, they then order the building owner to immediately repair it or to demolish it, or the city will act to do what it needs to do. And when they then fail after that, and they also do a title search, and they notify all the parties who have an interest in the property, including mortgage holders or other people holding a lien on the property. And if none of them come forward to address the problem, then the building commissioner, if we have funds available, will deputize our office, make us agents of the building commissioner, and we will proceed to begin the process of demolition, and we'll record a lien against the property for the cost. So, it is a process we have to go through. So, if you ask me today, well, how many buildings are ready to be demolished, other than the city-owned buildings that we know we can proceed with? I would say, well, we don't know which ones are quite ready that have gone through that process yet, but we're in the process of looking at all of the many dozens of buildings that are out there now, and we're probably starting with a number in excess of a hundred, and will hopefully whittle it down to, you know, a number that's manageable and that we have the budget for.
And I guess the reason I say that is because I got a call on one house in particular. She said she called the police six times in one week to go there, because the house was vacant. People were going in and out there, shouldn't have been there. And I'm thinking to myself, how many of these properties do we have where we're just spending money, just sending police officers there, or sending officials to these houses? And it's like they're a drain on the neighborhood, they're a drain on our budgets. And so, I didn't know if you looked at them and said, well, jeez, this house is, you know, this house is constantly being called on, it's awful, it should be taken down, so this one needs to go. But, I mean, if you're saying possibly a hundred, and we're doing eight, I like, it's like the roads, when are we ever going to catch up?
I don't have an answer for that one, Counselor. But I can say that, you know, the properties that are, in fact, wide open and that are regularly being broken into and that aren't properly secured, those are the ones that usually rise to the top of the list.
Okay, thank you.
Any further...
Motion to approve clearance activities.
Second.
A motion and second to approve clearance activities totaling one-hundred-and-eighty-eight, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and four cents. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Rehabilitation and preservation, building code enforcement, forty-nine thousand dollars. Project funds will be used to pay fifty percent of one existing full-time building inspector position and fifty percent of one full-time clerk position. Through enforcement of the state's sanitary and building codes, Fitchburg's housing stock will be greatly improved. To be eligible, this activity must be a part of a comprehensive strategy to arrest deterioration, including housing rehab and demolition. It is estimated that fifteen hundred housing units duplicate count will be inspected in the CDBG strategy area. Board of Health code enforcement at one-hundred-and-forty-three thousand dollars. Project funds will be used to pay one-hundred percent of two full-time Board of Health inspector positions and fifty percent of one full-time clerk position. Through the enforcement of the state's sanitary and building codes, Fitchburg's housing stock will be greatly improved. To be eligible, this activity must be part of a comprehensive strategy to arrest deterioration, including housing rehab and demolition. It is estimated that two thousand housing units duplicate count will be inspected in the CDBG strategy area. Any questions for building code enforcement? Any questions for Board of Health code enforcement?
Make a motion to approve rehab and preservation, one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve rehabilitation and preservation at one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. CDBG planning and administration, CDBG administration, two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. Project funds will be used to provide for necessary administration of CDBG programs and sub-recipient contracts in accordance with federal guidelines, including staffing, technical services, and planning activities. This also includes grant writing and administration of grant projects, which help leverage several million dollars in additional state and federal grants. Counsel Boshman.
Yeah. If I cut twelve thousand dollars, would I take your budget too much?
Well, it would mean that we wouldn't have sufficient funds to either pay the salaries of the people who actually manage the program, or it would mean that we wouldn't be able to reimburse the city as much for the fringe benefit costs of those positions, because about sixty thousand dollars of that amount is a payment back to the city to help cover those costs.
Oh, all right. I didn't know that either.
Counsel Bezos.
Thank you. I just wanted to give my opinion, and I think, you're leveraging several million dollars through grants and with the state and federal grants, you need, certain things need to be done, and they need to be handled properly so that the city doesn't get in trouble with these grants. And so, I think that this is money well-spent to actually take the grant money that we get and make sure that it's used appropriately. Thank you.
Counsel Joseph.
I guess my concern is the overall picture of the CDBG program. And I know that we have all approved the majority of everything that came out of here tonight, but with the reduction of the amount that's being put into CDBG, at least four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars of the nine-hundred-and-seventy-four that we're approving tonight is being put into salaries of city employees. So, we're half a million dollars into our budget. So, if we continue to, if we continue to have cuts in these programs, and we want to continue with the services, we should be looking as a city on how we should be, how we can provide these services to the residents without having to depend on CDBG to do it. So, I guess my concern is the lower CDBG goes, the higher amount city salaries are being funded by this, and that four-hundred-and-seventy-four doesn't include any kind of money that, out of those first couple of things that are going into DPW to do some work that is being done for the soccer fields and things like that. So, I just see, I'm just alarmed by the amount of money now from CDBG that's going into city salaries as opposed to other things that I think the CDBG is intended for, to supplement things within the community as opposed to just supplementing the city's budget. So, I'm concerned that we're not going to be able to sustain this budget if CDBG money just up and goes away. So, I'm concerned about that.
Counsel Joseph, I tend to agree with you. I think that's a significant portion of the overall allotment of CDBG funds. I'm not alarmed by the amount of money that's being spent on staff in general, within the totality of our entire city operations. I believe these positions should be funded. I just believe they should be funded from, the majority from our city's budget, not from the CDBG line items. I'd rather see the impact directly on the street or to increase things like demolition or other assets within our city. That said, I understand that'll, hopefully, I have faith that the, and I've spoken to the mayor about trying to start to leverage some of these items within the budget, and certainly have faith and hope that we'll start to move in that direction, at least wherever applicable or wherever we're able to start moving these in, because at the end of the day, if CDBG dried up tomorrow, the vast majority of these salaries or these activities would need to remain as essential functions of what we do. We can't stop Board of Health inspections or Building Code Enforcement. Otherwise, we really cease to operate as an entity. Those things need to happen anyway. So, those are prime examples of something that you move into our annual operating budget and should be sustainable by the bottom line. Mayor DiNatale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Joseph, you're absolutely right. I made a notation here, just, first of all, I want to thank the council for moving through this process so swiftly and for being positive in the results. But the CDBG program is woven into the operating budget, and that's speaking to what you were saying, Council President. You know, we're funding a number of positions through CDBG. And I think what I'm hopefully trying to do is wean ourselves off of that slowly and bringing those positions into the operating budget, which is going to free up more money, as Mr. Cassas has mentioned more than once, and Counselor Green, more money for the demolition aspects of our city, or more policing dollars, if you will. But, you know, we need to focus on increasing growth in the city of Fitchburg. If we can bring growth up, generate more revenue, then we won't have to rely on CDBG to fund health department positions. Ten percent of the DPW commissioner's salary is CDBG. That's a critical job in our community. That should be an operating budget position. But again, easier said than done. We need to find that revenue. And whatever we do, it has to be revenue-neutral, because we're in that tight a situation. So, I understand, I agree with you. And measures, I might add, also to the demolition process. I know people are saying, when are we ever going to catch up? We're just going to keep getting, falling deeper and deeper in the hole. The city solicitor and I have this conversation on a regular basis. There are measures that we're talking about beyond CDBG, beyond demolition, and how to attack that problem of blighted properties, if you will. There are other legal avenues that we're going to explore to do that. Larry was talking about the importance of the rail trail. Counselor Boshman, you're concerned with that? That, you know, we're making substantial changes to the River Street area, Counselor Caddes Ward. We're making substantial changes with the reimagined north of Main, Main Street area. The next, the next front, if you will, the next Normandy is River, excuse me, Water Street. And if we can tie that rail trail, if that generates some interest, we also need to link that with cleaning up that entire neighborhood, because that's another area that's long overdue. But it's more challenging. You know, Counselor, Counselor Bezos was mentioning, you know, some of these properties where people complain about people going in and out. As Larry mentioned, they're often tied into very complex legal issues and, you know, rights of property and whatnot, where you just simply can't say, we're going to take it and we're going to knock it down. You know, people still pay their taxes on it for one reason or another, which complicates the process. I mean, I would love to be able to do that, but we're also not in the real estate business either as a city. So, again, it's a process, it's slow, and people already know how patient a guy I am, but I have to, I have to put the brakes on sometimes, because that process moves slowly. But it is because we live in a country that cherishes the Constitution and people's property rights. So, we have to be careful. But, again, I want to thank you for moving so swiftly through this and for what I hope will be an approval. Thank you. Thank you.
Motion to approve planning and administration. Second.
I have a motion and second to approve planning and administration at $212,000. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd entertain a motion to accept the year 42 program amount.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion and second to accept the total recommended year 42 CDBG program in the amount of $974,243. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Larry, for your time.
I have a motion and...
I can do this on your time.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. We are adjourned. Counselors, we're going to reconvene.